How a lot of you do that. The other thing I'd like to announce is our city council leads are also streaming live on McMenville Community Media, our Home Access channel, they're being recorded for broadcast. And in addition to that, K O Y C is actually live streaming our council meetings. So we'll have some people-
Probably online that tonight been watching the meeting. So we're asking you try to keep any sidebar conversations if you can, please, a little bit down. And this is a reminder for the council and for the commission that since we are being livestreamed and we are on MCM, that make sure that when you're speaking that your microphones are turned on and try to keep them off when you're not speaking. And for those that are going to provide any testimony tonight, we ask when you come up to the table to provide your testimony, that you pull the speaker close enough to you so you can be well heard and that you state your name and address for the record and also you sign your name and address on the sign in sheet. And that way we'll make sure that it's all in the public record for those that are providing testimony tonight. So that being said, what I'd like to do is ask Councilor Ruden to lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Pledge of Allegiance) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor. This is a time on our agenda, if you look at the agenda, that we'd like to provide citizens an opportunity to provide public comment. A couple of things on what you can or cannot provide comment on tonight is if there's a topic already on the agenda and you're here to testify for that topic, we'd like you to wait till that agenda item. If the city is currently in a matter of litigation with you or somebody you know or a matter the city's currently in litigation, that cannot be discussed. If it's a quasi judicial land use matter or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date, we ask that you not provide testimony. And I will let you, if you forget, and as you get up to provide testimony, if you do during that part, I will remind you of the rules. And again, I, as Mayor, I may want to limit your comments tonight, so we'll go ahead and we'll go through that. So right now, is there any citizen who would like to speak to the council on anything on our agenda that is not on our agenda tonight or any other concerns? Wayne, would you like, if this is not on our agenda tonight, you can come on forward.
It's not even on the radar as far as I can tell. Might be on some people's agenda. My name is Wayne Stocks. I live at 435 Northeast Johnson here in the city.
The issue I want to talk to the city about is an item that I believe in this city has been woefully overlooked for, for some time. And that would be the use of alcohol. I think alcohol in this city is rampant. It's being used indiscriminately in many areas. You see nothing but signs. I mean, we were worried about how tall your sign could be in commercial areas here in town. And every time you drive down the city's main arterial, what you see is primarily neon flashing at you with all kinds of alcohol signs. Alcohol consumption. There are seventeen hundred students, college students, in the United States every year that die from alcohol-related accidents. Alcohol is the leading cause of death between the ages of fifteen and twenty-four. That study was done by Harvard University and published by Oregon State University, by the way. I checked with our police department here locally and in McMenville, the city proper to date this year, there have been ninety-four DUI arrests. I don't know how many convictions, but that's ninety-four DUI arrests.
My name is Mark Ritchie.
There have been, now, in their police reports, they have to mark this little box on the
I've been up here before and spoke. What I have on to propose on this agenda is a petition in the sale of fortified alcohol
police report if it's not a DUI and they're responding to some kind of criminal activity.
in downtown McMenville. This will extend several blocks to the left, to the right, up and back.
There's a box on their little report they can mark, but it's not required by the state.
What this is going to entail, all the fortified alcohols that are pumped up to beyond twelve
So sometimes I guess what I was told is it doesn't get marked.
percent.
So the only numbers I have here tonight for this issue are the ones that were actually
We're talking Hurricanes, if you're familiar with them, the beer. We're also talking Four Loko's.
marked. I was told it could be substantially more than this.
We're talking Juice. It makes people crazy on two cans.
There were four hundred and twenty-three alcohol-involved crimes within the city of
These are being sold to the homeless and to the poor on the street, and it's becoming
McMenville to date this year.
a real nuisance downtown. The police department's dropping them off on our church steps and wanting us to deal
So if we really want to look at something that is impacting this community in a huge
with them. Now, there should be a detox run that goes to Salem or Portland.
manner, maybe we should take a look at alcohol and decide what we can do about that.
It's not my concern. My concern is to help the city clean up the downtown area of fortified alcohols and call for a ban.
That's all I have to say about it.
I put in a petition downtown last week.
Okay, hold on Wayne. Any questions for Mr. Stocks from the council?
I went to every business. I got approximately sixty percent of the business owners or those affiliated with those
No questions? Thank you. Thank you, Wayne.
businesses to sign this.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to the council?
There's, I think, thirty-five signatures, approximately sixty percent of the Third Street
Come on forward, sir. And again, state your name for the record and sign in, please.
businesses. So I, like Wayne, says there's other step-ups and the drunkenness is rampant. And if it's not addressed, it's going to become like a cancer and it's just not good for the downtown area to have it here. This ban is not going to go to all of the city, but just to the crucial areas where it's become a nuisance and people are being involved, their businesses are being hurt, and concern needs to be raised on this. This is only fortified alcohols. And I understand that some of the wineries now have fortified alcohol, but that's not our concern on their shelves. That's going home with them as tourists in other towns and other cities to their own home. My concern's getting it off the street now to transit center and the public areas. Thank you very much.
Okay. What I'd ask you to do for right now, if you would, if you can give that to our city recorder, our city administrator, Rose over there, and she'll make sure it gets to the right people and we process it.
Thank you very much, sir.
Whatever needs to be done, then she'll be, is your name and everything on there so she'll know who to, it's on the public record, she'll know who to contact? Okay, is there anybody else who'd like to speak to the council on anything that is not on our agenda tonight? One more time, is there anybody who'd like to speak to the council for anything that isn't on our agenda tonight? Okay, then moving forward, what I want to do is we do have one item, we're going to change our schedule around besides our public hearing. We do have one piece of new business tonight before we call the Planning Commission to order. And we have a reappointment of Water and Light Commissioner, and that would be Michael Keys. He's served about eight years on our Water and Light Commission now. And as Mayor, it's my responsibility to recommend appointees to the four-year term on the commission. And I've asked Commissioner Keys if he would serve again, and he did say so with consensus of the council. I'd like to reappoint Mike Keys back to the Water and Light Commission. Is there any comments from the council? Is there a consensus of the council? Remy, you have anything? Alan? Okay. Well, then, Rose, would you notify City Water and Light and let Mike know for sure that he's been reappointed for a four-year term beginning in January 2016 to the Water and Light Commission? Okay, that takes us back to our public hearing tonight. And what I'd like to do is this is a public hearing regarding the standards for regulating marijuana business activities in McMenville. And since the council is already in session, again, this is a public, a joint public hearing. So what I'll do is I'll pass the gavel to Wendy Stass in the planning chair and ask her to call the Planning Commission into session. Wendy?
The December twenty-second McMenville Planning Commission meeting is now open.
Thank you very much, Wendy. So the council and the Planning Commission are now in session regarding our public hearing tonight. So at this time, what I'd like to do is ask Doug Montgomery of the city staff for his staff report. So Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel a little bit out of sorts. I'm usually over here, so this is a little bit new to me, so bear with me. Good evening as well to the councilors, planning commissioners. Before I start some of my comments, I would like to first take care of a little bit of a housekeeping item, and that's to enter some materials into the public record for this hearing. And those consist of a fairly lengthy list, but bear with me, please. We have an email from Denise Murphy dated December twenty-first of this year. You also have a number of packet materials that have been provided to in advance of this hearing. And those include a Linfield ownership map, a medical marijuana worksheet, medical marijuana summary, medical marijuana producer summary, recreational marijuana, marijuana wholesale summary, recreational marijuana sales summary, recreational marijuana producer summary. And then we also have letters from Steve and Mary Allen dated December fifteenth of 2015. We have petition from area businesses within the proposed Linfield buffer signed by approximately nine individuals. You also have a second petition that's from the Greenheart, Oregon, signed by fifty-five individuals. And then you have, which really meet at this hearing, a draft ordinance prepared for you by your staff. Finally, last bit of housekeeping business, I just note for the record that notice of this public hearing was provided to the Department of Land Conservation Development Commission as well as published in the news register, which are requirements for any type of legislative hearing, which this is all about. As I just mentioned, the focus of this hearing is the six-page draft ordinance that's been provided to you. That ordinance is designed to provide the time, place, and manner regulations for those various marijuana activities that are allowed by law. And we believe that that draft mirrors pretty closely the direction that this body, the council, provided to staff when we met back in November in a hearing here in this very room. Specific to that ordinance, there are three elements I'd like to focus your attention on. The first is a set of definitions that would guide and interpret elements of that ordinance. Those definitions are by and large taken directly from House Bill 3400 and other pieces of state legislation that relate to the marijuana laws now in place in the state. Secondly, a little piece of business which would deal with home occupation permits. And in this case, the recommendation is that the marijuana businesses not be permitted in residential areas, so it stands to reason that they be prohibited as home occupation. Finally, and as I said, likely the focus of much of tonight's discussion is the new chapter we proposed to add to the zoning ordinance, which would be entitled Marijuana-Related Activities. That new chapter includes six different sections. It has a purpose section, an applicability section. We also define locations for each of those activities. We have a set of performance standards. We have nonconforming use provisions as well as an enforcement section. My assumption is that the performance standards will probably bear the focus of much of your conversation and deliberation this evening. By way of background, staff has had direct conversation with three individuals prior to this hearing on this draft ordinance. Two of those individuals, we had lengthy conversations about the draft buffer around Linfield College, and the other was with an individual regarding the nonconforming use section of this draft ordinance. I will conclude my comments at that time unless you wish me to go into further detail. But I think with the number of people in the room, I'll stop at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Let's, Wendy, why don't you start the Planning Commission and see if the planning commissioners have any questions of staff?
Do any planning commissioners have questions of staff at this time?
Okay, any of the council have any questions for staff at this time? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Doug? This is the time now in our public hearing where when I ask for public testimony, invite you to come forward. Just a couple of things because of the size of the crowd. I want you to know that we don't follow any specific order whether you're in support or whether you're opposed to this ordinance, because it is a legislative ordinance in manner. But what we do ask you to do is once you testify, if somebody else wants to testify on the same points, that you please keep your points brief and not actually repeat anything anybody else has said. And since you are providing testimony, this isn't a time for anybody providing the testimony to ask questions of anybody. This is for providing testimony to the Planning Commission and to the city council. So that being said, what I will do is ask the first person who may want to testify to come up and sign in and everything. Let's go with you again, Wayne. You don't have to sign in again, but you do have to state your name and address for the record.
Wayne Stocks, 435 Northeast Johnson. As many of you know, I'm here to talk about the buffer around Linfield. I believe that that is an unreasonable request, not only by Linfield, but also by the city, even considering it to be a reasonable request. If it was a reasonable request, you would also be talking tonight about putting a buffer around Shemecata Community College, whether they wanted or not. There are more underage, under eighteen-year-olds going to Shemecata Community College on a regular basis than there are going to Linfield College. That's statistically fact. As far as Linfield College, and they're saying they have all these underage students using their facility every year, well, that's true. They do have a few. So does J.C. Penney's. They have a youth section. So does Walmart. They have a toy section. Thousands of children visit those locations also. Under the same reasoning that the occasional visits take place at Linfield, the occasional visits take place in all of those locations also. And I'm sure anyone can think of any number of other businesses here within the city that that would also be true. Any city street would also be true. All of the events that Linfield College has listed here, it says there's four thousand eight hundred and twelve students involved in activities, they're all sports activities, all of them. All of these activities take place closer to Davis Street than they do the main arterial commercial street in McMenville. Even their lunchroom is over a thousand feet away from the location where we have decided we want to put a medical marijuana dispensary. To be exact, it's one thousand thirteen feet and seven inches to the curb. So I don't understand how anyone can give credence to their statistics and their desires to have a buffer and not also follow through with a buffer around everything else that you're talking about if their request is prudent. It makes no sense to me. It says in their statistics, and I don't know about this one, because it says in two thousand, the two thousand and two, at the average of twenty-two. Is that an average over the last fifty years or is that an average for one year or is that this year? So are there significantly less than that this year? I don't know. Statistics are really easy things to manipulate. So are, well, like the petitions everybody's been circulating. Very grateful for the people that signed the petitions, took the time to read them, sign them, fill them out. Those are wonderful things. But those numbers really, in the scope of things here, mean very little. Because the real number that makes a difference here is the fifty-eight percent of our population that said they want to allow this within our city. Now, I understand this time, place, and manner thing. So, you know, some people could say, you know, that time, place, and manner means just about anything. But it also has to be reasonable, as stated in House Bill 3400. So that leaves a large area to look at. So reasonably, I would say, you have a buffer around one facility that has some students, but you're ignoring another one that doesn't or that has the same number of students or maybe even more in a year's time? This is situational. It's not required. None of these people are required to show up at this location. This is voluntary on their part, and most of these people have parents that come with them or that are close by. So that statistical stuff just doesn't mean a whole lot to me when we're talking about a reasonable rule. The real issue here is, and it was stated in the newspaper, and I'm hoping that it was correct because the rest of the article about what I said was accurate, so I'm assuming that what Linfield College said was accurate also, and that is that it doesn't look good. Now, those may not be the exact words, but basically that's what Linfield College, it just doesn't look good to have this dispensary right there at, they said, the entrance to their college. I beg to differ with that. The entrance to their college always has been and always will be the Oak Grove entrance to Linfield College. It is what they put on their paperwork. It's what you see on their pictures. It is not our city street. That is a city street in the city of McMenville paid for by the same fifty-eight percent of voters that voted for this. It's not their street or their entrance. Now, many people have seen what the building's going to look like. We're trying to be very respectful. We have been very respectful in this whole endeavor. There could be hundreds on either side. I just want you to think about when those items are brought up and thought about, I really encourage you to think about the fifty-eight percent that said yes. I think I don't have anything else to say. Any questions?
Okay, any questions? Let's just start over. We'll go over. Look around. Any questions?
None, thank you, Wayne.
Not at this time.
Okay, how about, let's start over. Charles? No questions there. Kelly? Kevin? Okay, Wendy, you have any?
Nope.
And I don't have anything. Thank you very much, Wayne. Okay. Just go ahead and sign in, please.
I have signed in. My name is John McHagan. I reside at 815 Northwest Yamhill Street in McMenville. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors, and members of the Planning Commission. As I've said, I'm John McHagan, Vice President and General Counsel for Linfield College, an Oregon nonprofit corporation. I reside at 815 Northwest Yamhill Street. I am appearing on behalf of the college and representing President Thomas Helly and as a resident of McMenville since 1998. President Helly is unable to attend this evening, but present with us are Susan Agar Kippenhahn, our Vice President for Academic Affairs, Dean of Faculty; Dan Preston, our Vice President for Enrollment Services; Susan Hop, our Vice President for Student Affairs; David Ostrander, our Vice President for Institutional Advancement; Scott Carnahan, our Athletic Director; Jeff McKay, Associate Dean of Students; Marty Mylum, Director of Communications; and Scott Brochus, our recently retired Head Baseball Coach. We all offer our deep thanks to the city council, the Planning Commission, and city staff for the substantial work that was associated with this evening's meeting. We are particularly grateful that in this holiday season, when everyone could easily find a more festive way to gather, we can come together to consider important community issues. Dr. Helly has asked me to read a letter for your consideration. It is addressed to the mayor, the city council, and the Planning Commission. Dear Mayor and Council and Commission Members, For more than one hundred fifty-eight years, Linfield College and McMenville have enjoyed a mutually beneficial partnership. In addition to the seventeen hundred students who call McMenville home for nine months each year, two hundred ninety-six Linfield employees, nearly seventy percent, live, raise their families, and participate in this remarkable community. In fact, Linfield serves as a type of community center for McMenville. Children under the age of eighteen attend a wide variety of events all over campus each year, with some ten thousand minors participating in athletic events, sport camps, speech tournaments, lectures, workshops, and small group programs with faculty and students. Children also take part in art, music, and theater performances and activities. Many come to get their first exposure to college and to learn about opportunities that are available in higher education. Many attend as city-sponsored summer concert series, and each year, one to two percent of our first-year students are under the age of eighteen. The college's request for a one-thousand-foot buffer zone is consistent with those that the city council previously placed around the library and the community center. These are all areas where minors congregate. Buffer zones, authorized by Oregon law, recognize that ID checks alone are not sufficient protection. We are grateful that the Planning Commission and the city council are willing to consider the college's request and to determine what is in the best interest of our community. We are in a changing environment, and other communities around the country are also addressing the issue of buffer zones. For example, last week, the Detroit, Michigan City Council adopted a zoning ordinance with a one-thousand-foot buffer zone that reportedly will put about half of the one hundred fifty marijuana dispensaries there out of business. A due diligence review of federal law highlights another potential hurdle for businesses. For nearly thirty years, federal law has explicitly included, and I quote, "a public or private college, junior college, or university," close quote, "within a one-thousand-foot enhanced penalty zone." And despite changes to state laws in the last several years, the U.S. Department of Justice has repeatedly emphasized that prosecution priorities will continue to focus on marijuana activities occurring near areas associated with minors. While the college recognizes that a medical dispensary at the former Jake's Deli could be grandfathered in, a buffer zone around the rest of our campus is a reasonable time, place, and manner restriction. We will remain concerned about the impact of a facility situated literally at one of our main entrances and just a block from our admissions office. By conservative estimate, some three thousand potential students and families come to Linfield on admission-related visits each year. About thirty percent, or five hundred and ten, of our current student body comes from states other than Oregon and Washington. Maintaining our enrollment is essential when more than ninety percent of our revenue is from tuition and fees. A drop in enrollment could have a devastating impact on the college and the programs we offer to our students, on our employees, and on the entire McMenville community. For nearly 30 years, federal law has explicitly included, and I quote, "a public or private college, junior college, or university," close quote, "within a 1,000-foot enhanced penalty zone." And despite changes to state laws in the last several years, the U.S. Department of Justice has repeatedly emphasized that prosecution priorities will continue to focus on marijuana activities occurring near areas associated with minors. While the college recognizes that a medical dispensary at the former Jake's Deli could be grandfathered in, a buffer zone around the rest of our campus is a reasonable time, place, and manner restriction. We will remain concerned about the impact of a facility situated literally at one of our main entrances and just a block from our admissions office. By conservative estimate, some 3,000 potential students and families come to Linfield on admission-related visits each year. About 30 percent, or 510, of our current student body comes from states other than Oregon and Washington. Maintaining our enrollment is essential when more than 90 percent of our revenue is from tuition and fees. A drop in enrollment could have a devastating impact on the college and the programs we offer to our students, on our employees, and on the entire McMinnville community. We are aware that some members of the community are troubled about the sale of alcohol to minors and the proximity to campus of businesses selling alcohol. In compliance with the Federal Drug-Free Schools Act, the college prohibits the use of alcohol on campus by anyone under the age of 21, and also prohibits the use of illegal drugs by anyone on campus, and that includes marijuana. On behalf of Linfield College, I offer my thanks to the Planning Commission and the City Council for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Dr. Thomas Helly, President. In addition to this letter, I would also offer a document detailing the various categories of the 10,000 children who are on our campus each year, and a petition signed by 515 individuals, including our trustees, faculty, staff, students, alumni, and concerned citizens, requesting that the City Council protect children at Linfield with a 1,000-foot restriction on marijuana facilities. Do I present those to the...
Okay. And she dropped out. So, yes, give it to Rose, and she missed her...
Thank you very much, and are there any questions?
Okay, let's just start. Any questions? Let's just go around the table, and I'll look around the table real quick. No, I think that you have one. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have. Do you think that the 1,000 feet will deter from anybody on campus going a little bit further out and buying marijuana?
The, as I've said, well, first of all, medical marijuana or recreational marijuana is legal in Oregon if you are 21. Presumably, three-quarters or more of our students are less than 21. Are we aware that students use marijuana? Yes, we cannot deny that. Do we sanction and discipline students who use marijuana? Yes. Has this occurred prior to legalize marijuana? Yes. So, the 1,000-foot buffer, as I think Dr. Helly's letter explains, is consistent with actions taken both at the federal level, at the state level, and by this City Council to protect minors, children under 18.
As I understand, that if you are under 18, you're not even allowed to go into the store.
And, as Dr. Helly's letter stated, ID checks alone, we do not believe are sufficient, or there wouldn't be a protection around other areas where minors congregate, such as the community center, the public pool, the library.
Is that it, your question, Martin? Okay, any others? If not, thank you.
I have some questions. Thank you very much for being here. So, I have a few questions from the letter that you read from Dr. Helly. One, which is similar to Martin's question. You said that you addressed the proximity to campus of alcohol sales by having Linfield established as a drug-free zone, drug-free school zone, and prohibiting the use of alcohol on campus.
By anyone under 21.
By anyone under 21. And that this, the drug-free school zone, it also applies to marijuana, right?
Let me be, try to be more precise. The Controlled Substances Act, federal law, since 1986, has included the quote that was included in Dr. Helly's letter. That is, that a 1,000-foot enhanced penalty zone exists around public or private colleges, junior colleges, or universities for any activities relating to sales, use of controlled substances. The Drug-Free School Act is an entirely different piece of federal legislation. Under that act, we are subject to loss of all federal funding, all student loans, if, in fact, we do not vigorously prohibit the use of alcohol or illegal drugs on our campus by anyone under 21. So, there are two federal acts there.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that, and I do understand that. And when you mentioned the drug-free school portion towards the end, that act...
Yes.
You said that you addressed that by prohibiting the use of alcohol and marijuana on campus.
Correct.
Okay. So, and you said that you also addressed the relative distance of alcohol sales to campus through this act. And so, because we are aware that alcohol sales occur at many locations close to campus, arguably on campus through IPNC and other things of this nature, my question is why you feel this buffer would create a control for the school that the school is already addressing, as you stated?
Thank you. The issue before us is reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on marijuana dispensaries. And that being the issue, we think that there is continuity and constancy with the City Council having previously identified areas where minors congregate, and the campus, we believe, is clearly such a type of community center that should receive the same type of protection.
Okay. You said about 10,000 students come through for these various events?
Yes.
And these students, when these minor students come through, are they largely supervised or unsupervised?
As a parent of children, the question of supervision of minors is an interesting one, but let me try to answer your question. Athletic camps, which can last for a week or two, involve supervision, clearly, when the athletes are involved in their sports activities, but when they're living in their residence halls, although they do have a certain number of coaches and/or parents that are there, are they under strict supervision? No. Some of our activities, like the summer concert series, do children wander around the concert site? Absolutely. Are their parents there? Yes. Are they being supervised? That depends on someone's definition of supervision. And so, some of the events, for example, the 3,000 students that come on admissions visits, often, they are with parents, sometimes, they are not.
Okay.
So, I guess the best answer I could give you is that it varies.
Okay. And I just have one more kind of question, or it might be a small body of questions, but would you say that the school's primary concern is protection of minors? Is that the standpoint of the school?
We think that the continuation of a previously adopted ordinance by the City Council is one that recognizes the need for protection in areas where minors congregate.
Okay. I ask that because in your letter, one thing that you said is maintaining our enrollment is vital.
Yes.
Yes. And so, I, of course, agree that maintaining your enrollment is vital, but it gives me pause to think that the city would be enacting an ordinance if the focus of it was to, if the focus of it was a financial benefit to the college. In other words, why is your enrollment, why would you ask the city to enact an ordinance if the reason for that ordinance is to help the college with enrollment?
As I believe I've answered, the thrust of our position is that, just as the City Council was willing to extend a buffer around areas where minors congregate, and our campus is an area where minors congregate, and in fact, minors, we hope, will eventually become 18 and older, and some of them will enroll at Linfield College, which we think provides benefits to both the institution and the community, that by acting to place a buffer zone around the campus, it's a continuation of previous wise decisions made by the City Council.
Okay. Well, I definitely think that Linfield is an important and vital part of McMinnville, and I want the college to thrive. So, I hope you understand that my questioning in regards to you bringing up college enrollment and how it relates to this ordinance is one that I think needs to be asked.
Oh, and I'm not offended or insulted in any way. I think that the zoning process, what we're engaged in here this evening, is one of the things that makes this community remarkable, and it involves a balancing, and we recognize that, and that the interests, zoning in general, can act to support certain types of businesses in certain areas and not certain types of businesses in other types of areas. So, we recognize that there is a balancing that's involved here, and we're pointing out that the impact of not having a buffer zone could be extremely detrimental to the health of the college, and we believe the community.
And I guess I didn't mean to misspeak and say that I didn't have any more questions, but I guess what you just said kind of did bring up one thing, one other question. What if there was an alcohol-related business that were going into that location? Would you be looking for a similar protection? Or I could extend that to other industries that are regulated. If there was a gun shop going in at the entrance to Linfield College, would you be looking for protections as well?
I can't speak to a matter that's not before us. The matter that is before us tonight is a marijuana dispensary.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? None? Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, Tony, I see your hand up. Come on forward again and state your name and address for the record, and sign in, please. Still got the bad mic. That's all right. Take your time. I know the matters do.
Yeah. My name is Tony Brown. I live at 979 Southwest Goucher here in McMinnville.
Tony, can you pull the microphone a little bit more closer?
Did you get all, okay. First of all, I want to lead off by saying, I love Linfield. I've been a ticket holder for their sports for 36 years, you know, but don't tell me that Linfield's campus is drug-free. There's no one here tonight that believes that, and for the thousands of minors that visit your campus, don't tell me they've never been exposed to marijuana. And besides, you have to be 21 to enter this business. So, having marijuana that close, that far, these kids... Secondly, don't tell me that the efforts of my wife, myself, and many other people here that worked on fundraisers for the college, like Partners in Progress, where we asked businesses to donate money to help the growth of Linfield, and now you're telling businesses what they can and can't do, businesses along our busiest commercial street. What's next? Thirdly, don't tell me my vote doesn't count. This measure was passed by a strong majority. Don't tell me that in our democracy, a city folks can vote, but unless you don't like it, then it doesn't count. And lastly, if you're so worried about the boundaries, why don't you move your campus back 1,000 feet? God knows you have plenty of room, and it's a win-win situation. You get what you want, and we don't have to waste our time and the time of the councils and the money for all of these hearings.
Okay, and let's say that. Any more questions? Let's go around.
None right now, thank you.
How about down at this end? Hearing none? Thank you very much, Tony.
Thank you.
All right, come on forward.
Thank you. Jennifer Sanders at 1208 Southwest Baker Street.
Can you repeat? Get a little closer.
Jennifer Sanders, 1208 Southwest Baker Street. I also brought with me the remainder of the petitions with over 400 signatures in support of not having the ban around Linfield. I speak as the partner of Wayne Stocks, and I thank you for entertaining the concept that we're a business. We are there, obviously, situated for profit. I'm not hiding that. What you may not understand also is that we do have a nonprofit, and that encompasses the largest portion of that building going in there, about three to one. I am not from here, though my family is from here. My father was a logger for 27 years, grew up in Oregon, youngest of eight. So, coming back here, I drove through the entire Pacific Northwest, Southwest, East Coast, decided, after meeting Wayne Stocks, that McMinnville was the city I thought I would like to spend the most time in. I'm building a national company, but I wanted to be here. I wanted to work with him, and I found a location that the city had already gone through the due diligence process of deciding where they did and did not want marijuana. So, as a business owner, partner, I felt safe putting my hard-earned investment money, my personal money, a lot of it, into this business here. I don't want to say figures, but in the multiple hundreds of thousands I have spent here in McMinnville to situate this business here, keeping people on payroll through delays, through the OHA, the city, all kinds of things, permitting, I think we made a good decision. I think the city has a really difficult decision to make. I empathize with you. You're trying to protect the city, you're trying to protect the college, they're trying to protect their students, they're trying to protect their business. We all are trying to protect everybody. I just want a fair shot, and I thought you guys went through the process, and what concerns me the most is, if this was so important to Linfield, why wasn't it done the first go-around? That's my only question is, why wasn't this done a while back to protect me, to protect Wayne from making bad business decisions? You know, we went into a partnership, and with Steve and Mary, they retired. They left their business to let us in because they believed in what we were doing. They made very huge personal, financial decisions based on what they thought the city had already done, and I don't want to speak for them. They wrote their letter. What frustrates me additionally is that when I did set up my petition, and all of my employees and participants helped, I instructed them to stay off the Linfield campus and keep it a fair fight. I said, I want to hear from everybody else but Linfield. I want to hear what the people have, and it turns out, almost half of them were students, not on the campus. And when I hear things, and they are hearsay, please don't admit this, but I do hear that petitions are being passed around in class from professors, and that is coercive, and that is concerning to the city. So, I just ask you to reflect on all of those things. I understand the decision you're making. I just want you to understand the decision I made, and I hope for the best, whatever that is. So, thank you.
Questions?
I have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Why did you put all of your money? I've noticed now both sides of this argument have brought up money. Why did you choose to put all your money into a location at the entrance of a school? Did you not think that there would be a public outcry?
I did not. I thought, since they had already went through the process, that they had determined the zones, that they wanted it to be there. I truly did.
Well, but of all the available land around Linfield, or around that side of town, all of the areas that you could see a permitted use, your location is undeniably adjacent to Linfield. I'm sure that, it's not, only occurred to me, that it would seem as though that would be a draw, a... that would be a draw, a let's draw on the student body of Linfield.
I had looked into the OSU campus and had seen that there was not a buffer placed around there as well. There are medical facilities in that area within the thousand-foot. I did not find another location in the city of McMinnville that was available for my business at that time. There may be something now, but three months ago when I made this decision, it was the best property for what we were doing because it had the kitchens, it had the two different areas. It allowed us to have a distinctive community center and a distinctive place for a medical dispensary. It had ample parking. I didn't look at it because it was next to McMinnville. I looked at it because it was appropriate for the business I was putting in there.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
You are proposing to sell just medical marijuana this time?
We have an application in for medical marijuana.
Are you planning in the future to have recreational marijuana for sale as well?
Depending on how this goes, I haven't really made that decision yet. I'm a little fearful at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Any more questions? Not? Thank you very much. Nice to see you again tonight. Okay, come on, let's, you had your hand up. Let's come on back. Let's go on back there. And since you already signed in, just go ahead and state your name and address again for the good jerk, so we'll know who's talking.
My name's Mark Critt. I live at 1427 Northwest, or Northwest Fifth Street, McMinnville. I'd like to thank the council for being here and hearing us. I'd like to thank Wayne Stocks for being my care provider, my grower, my supplier, and it is a medicine facility that's going in, not a recreational. Now, the difference between medicine and recreational, everybody knows. Recreational, you take it home, you puff on it, ha-ha-ha. Now, this medicine, I've been on THC for nearly fifteen, twenty years. I'm a disabled vet, and I choose my own meds. I've been in trouble for doing that in the past. Now I have the right to make my choice, whether it be recreational or medical. The point being, I think, is if Linfield was so concerned with minors, they would be more concerned with alcohol consumption at football games and after football games and in behind the dorms. I mean, it's a battle between good and evil, it seems like, but you know what? I made my choice a long time ago to keep my kidneys, my liver, and all my organs intact by not doing codeine. Now, my pain gets pretty bad sometimes. I also have PTSD, and I also have insomnia. This helps out on all levels. There's new technology coming out in this medicine that we can extract the ha-ha out of all of it, and then we got all our medicines. We put it in a nice little tincture. We take it three times a day, and we don't get stoned on it. But the point being is, this is a medical facility and a learning center that's going to be giving informational technology to people that want to come in on a medical level. And that's about all I got to say. Thank you very much.
And let's put you in the front.
Hi there. My name's Peyton Curry, 1208 Southwest Baker. It was my idea to move here. It was my idea to sell my business in Arizona to the Green Heart, Oregon. It was also my idea to do the due diligence to make sure that I was abiding by all laws. I'm a husband, and I don't want to make my wife upset, and I have children, a daughter. I want to make sure I can go home to my family at night. I don't grow anything in my home other than a family and great standards and morals. I came here to McMinnville, Oregon because of that location, because of, excuse me, because of Linfield College. You see, what I do for a living is I feed cannabis to children and families and the elderly across the country. I use a non-psychoactive form of cannabis, which is just raw juice. There is zero way that you can psychologically, physically, emotionally, or mentally get high off of THCA, which is THC acid. This is no different than a vegetable that we grow all across the country that's called kale. Man, we sure are juicing a lot of kale, aren't we? Imagine what's going to happen when non-psychoactive cannabis comes out into the mainstream. What we're doing with Wayne Stocks is we're converting root balls of cannabis into sugar that diabetics can consume, and it doesn't affect their blood sugar level. This is all made out of a vegetable that we can legally grow in this state of Oregon called cannabis. Marijuana, we only use when we involve propaganda, and right now, in Oregon, we're not following anything but the law. And for us, as the gentleman was just up here, one of the greatest things that I make as a cannabis cook is a childhood for a child. We've had children across the country have three hundred seizures a day from Dravet syndrome. I take some of the cannabis that Wayne grows and a little bit of olive oil that I bought down the street at McMinnville Olive Oil Company, excuse me for butchering the name, but it's a fine lipid structure. It's a fine amino acid and protein chain that I can use a vegetable that we're growing and putting money back into the community here, and that is the only time I will talk about money, is when it goes back to the community. Because without the community, what good is money? We can't do anything with it because we don't have anyone around us. That's why I came to McMinnville, is because I have a campus right across the street from me. And what do they do at a campus? They teach. What do I do as a cook? I teach. I teach how to make food that isn't going to make you sick when you go out to eat. I teach people how to make sauerkraut with organic cabbage bought from local farmers because it's great and rich in probiotics. I care about this community more than I care about business, because as I just stated, without a community, what's the good of business? I can't do anything with anything. And with Linfield College being right across the street teaching and unlearning the public, I went there, I went to that campus, I went to Jake's, I met Wayne. I fell in love with that campus for one reason, a selfish one. They have a nursing program that I cannot wait to tell America about Linfield College's nursing program and how it relates to non-psychoactive cannabis. We haven't even talked about medicine. Humans are the only ones that convert this vegetable into medicine. How do we do that? With ignition of flame? With solvents? Or alcohol? Alcohol. Alcohol. So for me, to be able to come to a community like this and not go to Denver, and not go to San Francisco, not go to Seattle, I came to McMinnville, Oregon after I sold my company because of Wayne Stocks, because of the community, and because of Linfield College, I need help as a cannabis cook, as a cannabis therapist, and as a community. I need help. I need scientists. I need labor. I need nurses. But most importantly, I need you to ask yourself if this is a reasonable manner to keep us from providing the nation with something as revolutionary as non-psychoactive cannabis, which is available to the public of McMinnville, Oregon. And with that, I truly thank you, because this is one of the greatest communities that I've set foot in. I'm a Minnesota boy. I donate my hair to children with cancer, and I will do that for the rest of my life. But I want to do that here. I want this to be a part of McMinnville, Oregon, not a part of Denver, not a part of Chicago. I want it to be a part of McMinnville, Oregon, because this place is unique, and this place deserves the attention of a national movement, and not something that we're afraid of. I'm not afraid to sit up here, because I've seen these family members provide a childhood to their children who are on seventeen different medications because of seizures. I'm not asking you to allow us to do this. I'm asking for your trust. And with that, I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Okay, let's start. Any questions? Let's start table over there. No questions over here? No, let's start down at this end. Kelly, Kevin? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you have a question right there?
Hi.
Thanks for coming in. Would all of the marijuana products that you had at your facility be non-psychoactive?
It's all non-psychoactive until the patient or the consumer takes it home and decides what to do with it. It's the same as buying a one-seven-five of vodka and being able to go home and make a Bloody Mary. How buzzed do you want to get? And I trust that we can teach in that community center about cannabis, and people can bring in family members that have questions about cannabis and how to medicate with it. Because this, I'm telling you, is one of the most beautiful scenarios that I have ever seen in this nation, and I've been in this cannabis industry for seven years. And it's one of the most beautiful facilities because of that college, because of our ability to go and ask and get answers, because of the professionalism and trust. That's what it is. So with that said, a large part of our focus is on this non-psychoactive form of cannabis. For those with lupus, IBS, Irritable Bowel Syndrome, IBD, Crohn's Disease, we're having some great, great success with Crohn's Disease in as little as six weeks with just juice, with just juice. And all I need is a way to file this data, so it isn't what I call anecdotal evidence, which is just anecdotal evidence with panic. So without that, I don't have any way to get my everyday community action taken seriously. My dad's a Johns Hopkins graduate, and he looks at me as the green sheep, and I really appreciate that, because that is part of the direction that brought me to McMinnville. It's because of the nursing. And when my father told me about Linfield College, I thought we hit a home run, man. I really did. I really thought we hit a home run, because with these tinctures and juices, as we discussed, it's amazing. So thanks.
Thank you very much. Let's see, have I seen any other hands up? Chris, your hand was up. Where are you going?
My name is Chris Brown. I live at 979 Southwest Goucher Street here in McMinnville, Oregon. And I think, in my opinion, what we're looking at here is legislated controlled issues. Products, beer, wine, alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, they are all controlled substances that have all been legislated in one point or another. Now, unlike my husband, I always vote a different way, so I am not the person that voted yes for the marijuana, but I do vote yes for the rights for people to do their own business that is legislated and controlled. If we're looking for a buffer around Linfield, that means, in my opinion, nine other businesses need to go away, because they include alcohol, tobacco, they include wine, beer, and those are all okay, but they are all a controlled substance. It appears to be that these folks have their game plan and how it is controlled, and it is, again, a legislated controlled issue. So we don't have a buffer. If you look at the Adams Campus at McMinnville High School, that's within five hundred feet of the back door of the liquor store. Well, those kids do not have access. They walk by that liquor store twenty-seven times a day, back and forth. They're not allowed in. They don't go in the door, and they're not getting their fifth of vodka for the afternoon at the liquor store. So I really am concerned that we have legislation, we have controlled substances, and we, as a society, know how to control those substances, and we do not have to put a buffer zone around anyone's business. Thank you.
Questions for Chris?
Yes.
No questions for Chris? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Adam, I think you start coming up, Adam, because I think your hand was up next.
Sorry, I forgot my stamp. So the reason we're here, just to be blank, is basically Linfield has an issue with not-in-my-backyard syndrome. Their mission statement off their website reads, and I quote, "Promotes intellectual challenge and creativity, values both theoretical and practical knowledge, engages thoughtful dialogue in a climate of mutual respect, honors the rich texture of diverse cultures and varied ways of understanding, piques curiosity for a lifetime of inquiry, and inspires the courage to live by moral and spiritual principle and to defend freedom of consensus." So about the ten thousand or so minors that have come to their campus, I was one of those minors many moons ago, attending Larry Doty's High Five Basketball Camp. Anytime you were to leave your dorm, it was always escorted. You always had supervision. Fast forward, ten years passed that. When I was a pizza delivery guy, you go there, in the summertime, they always have the ODP soccer camps there or various other football or baseball camps. Anytime you see kids going to and from 7-Eleven, where you can buy beer without having to go through an access controlled door after your ID is checked, you can just walk in and buy your beer ten feet away from your Snickers bar. Those are also supervised trips. So to think that minors are traveling around this thousand-foot buffer zone of Linfield unsupervised is just totally untrue. And it's kind of hypocritical in nature to think that we should put a buffer zone around Linfield. But yeah, you can go to Tom's Presidential Circle Donor Dinner and have Linfield private labeled wine served that Mo Montozzi made, who sits on their board, or, you know, probably the biggest marijuana bust that Mac PD's taken down in the last fifteen years, was also a Linfield student at the time, an Delta fraternity member. Then you fast forward to being a lifelong citizen here and the entrepreneurial stature of myself and the land that surrounds Linfield. It's not as simple as just saying, hey, I want to open a dispensary. You have to find a piece of land that's not in a current buffer area of schools, preschools, community center, library. Then after you find that, you got to make sure it has the right zoning that Doug's put in place. Then after you figure that out, you got to find a piece of property that's owned outright and doesn't have a note on it, because of the federal regulation on lending, any bank will pull that note for who would be your landlord. So then after you find land that's free and clear, now you got to find a landlord that still wants to let you lease their building for marijuana. So it's not as simple as saying, oh, we got ninety-five plots of land outside of our buffer zones. Why don't you go to one of those other ninety-five areas? In this city, I bet you there's probably eight pieces of property that are not utilized right now that you could possibly convince a landlord with a, you know, two-hundred, three-hundred percent offer on what his actual going rate is on his lease to let him, let you put your marijuana business in. Then you look at the thousand-foot buffer around Linfield as well. One of our biggest employers in town is a health foods company. You don't think they're going to be approached to private package health food bars that are infused with marijuana? I mean, you're going to put restrictions on one of the biggest employers in town because somebody wants to say not in my backyard? Try and own a rental house over off Mill Rider Naomi Way. If you want to lease that to a family of four, they're going to be ran out of there within three months wanting to cancel their lease, because all they hear and see is parties every night by Linfield students. So I think they should be more worried about policing themselves before they worry about policing all the entrepreneurs and private citizens of this great city and community. That's what I got.
Any questions? Very none. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to you right there. Come on forward.
Good evening. I'm Susan Ager Kippenhan. I live at 930 Northeast Sampson Street in McMinnville. I want to make just a couple of quick comments. One of the questions that Linfield College has been asked is, why didn't we do any of, or have any of these conversations prior to the first round of considerations about the placement of this business? And one of the things that we would like to add is that we really didn't contemplate the possibility of this happening. the possibility of this happening, because even our reasonable due diligence would have included noting that even after the changes in recent law in Colorado, Washington, and Massachusetts, we can easily obtain articles that there is federal enforcement action against dispensaries within 1,000 feet of places that minors congregate. In fact, these are articles that are cited in the Marijuana Business Daily. So, we were easily able to obtain that. I'd also like to correct, or at least add, that the petitions at Linfield College, there was no coercion. On the dean of faculty, we specifically asked faculty not to bring them into class, and so anecdotal conversation about coercion is misplaced. And finally, just as a note, our nursing campus is not in Linfield. We helped prepare students who will eventually move to our nursing campus, which is located in Portland.
Any questions at all? None. Thank you very much. Mark Waller?
Thank you. My name is Dave Mim. I reside at 648 Northwest 9th Street, McMinnville. And yes, McMinnville's a fine community. I moved here about five years ago from Yamhill. And to help take care of my mother-in-law, who had cancer. And as part of her cancer treatment, she was treated with a synthetic marijuana, Marinol, I believe is what it was called, and it was effective. So, I'm not anti-progressive as far as medicine goes. I have a concern, though, about the abuse of this product that is going to be dispensed. I have personal family members, siblings, a child that has used it, uses it, and it's a concern to me because of choices that have been made on a daily basis. I have a concern about the community as far as the health of the individuals that might be affected by people that abused, abuse a possible drug, a drug that might possibly be very good, used correctly, or in the right hands. But just as alcohol, I witnessed 30 years in the fire service of responding to accidents and decisions that affected the lives or termination thereof of children and people by the abuse of these medications or substances such as alcohol. I went through PC3, PCP period, angel dust, LSD, and 30 years of fire service, and I saw, you know, the effects of it. And I sleep with that every night. It wakes me up. And it's concerning to me, because the ones that were hurt the worst were usually the ones that were not the users. I drive by somebody that's on a curb and may not see a car that's approaching them, and I want to step out and stop it. And that's what I feel like I want to do here. You know, I'm not ready for it. I didn't vote for it, and I am not in favor for it. Because I've seen the other side. Maybe there's a good side to it. But I'm concerned about Linfield losing federal money. I think we should take note that it is federally illegal. It's federally controlled. I'm concerned about the cost that's involved with law enforcement. I'm concerned about the cost of responding medical individuals from the fire department. And I'm more so concerned about the health, or the effects of the health of the people that are affected by the people that have abused. You know, the dispensary right now, their concern is, and their attempt is to sell a medical marijuana product. And at this time, they do not propose to sell recreational. You know, I'm not for recreational. But I think that the fact that the statement was made that their concern is not to sell at this time is concerning to me. What about in the future? That's another hurdle we have to pass? So, those are my statements, and I thank you for listening to me. Any questions?
Any questions? Very none. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Want to come up and sit by? The handsome gentleman that's getting up now.
Thank you. My name is Skip Hewald. I live at 2125 Northwest Michael Book Lane. And it's been a very interesting evening, and I've enjoyed it. It's nice to see democracy in action. Yeah. I've enjoyed this evening. It's nice to see democracy in action. I am not a part of any group that's here to persuade, but I'm an interested citizen, and I've been listening, and I've been watching, and I just kind of have a couple of comments, like, maybe we look at this thing from 10,000 feet. I have a lot of sympathy for those who have made investments in their business. I've been a businessman all my life. I've made some investments where I've had to weigh risk and reward, and it's always difficult when things don't work out. But if you look at this from a long ways up, it looks to me like we're looking at, basically, the benefit for one group of businesspeople, as opposed to the benefit of generations of young kids who may come off, on and off this campus. I don't think many in this room right now are arguing with the results of the vote on marijuana. My wife and I voted for it. But that seems to be a different thing. We've had some very eloquent speakers up here talking about the good that marijuana can do, and I argue with none of that. I think that's probably all very true. But even though there may be some limitations on where facilities such as this can be set up, I doubt that the only viable option is where they're talking about it. It seems to me that there must be other opportunities, or are there other facilities operating in town? So I just wanted to say, like, from 10,000 square feet or altitude, it looks like there's a little bit of imbalance here in weight. Looks, on the one hand, we're looking at some businesspeople who want to do something. On the other hand, we're looking at perhaps generations of kids who might be going through the Linfield campus, and that's what I have to say.
Any questions? Very none. Thanks, Skip. Hey, anyone else who'd like to speak? Professor, would you come up here, please? Of course, now you have to sign and state your name for the record, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Dave Hanson. I reside at 2130 Northwest Michael Book Lane. Members of the Planning Commission and members of the City Council, as someone who has previously served on both the Planning Commission and the City Council, I remember very clearly that the most difficult issues with which we had to grapple were those that had competing sides and differences of opinion about an issue, hoping that their outcomes were the ones that would be selected. And each side might have an individual reasonable argument, but sometimes those arguments were internally incompatible with one another. And so the councils had to make a decision. It may have been the Planning Commission deciding if it was right and prudent to permit a drive-through restaurant in an otherwise quiet neighborhood. It may have been the City Council deciding what conditions, if any, to allow social gaming within the confines of the city of McMinnville. You're all charged with helping to establish the nature and character of our community. You face a very interesting dilemma, it seems to me. On the one hand, you may want to support a, as yet not fully formed enterprise seeking profit that wants one outcome and an interest in a particular location. On the other hand, you have an obligation to protect the safety of our underage population and youth. Which has the higher priority? As it happens, you may have already answered that question. I wonder if the rationale by which you have already decided to create buffer zones around grade schools, high schools, library, and the community center, as well as parks, might also be logically extended to include colleges, which serve a significant underage population. Linfield, for example, has over 1,000 underage students, and routinely has on campus high school and younger students who visit the campus for athletic events, music concerts, summer camps, theater productions, music programs, speech tournaments, and the like. And it has a high-volume traffic and a recruiting program that attracts underage youth to the campus. I served on the council at a time when the city undertook a community choices survey to learn what citizens most valued in this community. By far and away, the leading response to that survey was that McMinnvillians wanted to retain a small-town atmosphere. Council members could articulate, council members and/or survey takers, I think, could probably articulate exactly what that meant, but we all had a sense, a feeling, an aura about what it meant to have a small community atmosphere. For the remainder of my time that I served on the City Council, every decision that I made was considered from the perspective of how to best maintain that small-town atmosphere. While that survey is now dated, I strongly suspect that the sentiment that it reflects is not at all outdated. As you ponder the decision you're about to make this evening, I recommend to you the following question. What will best safeguard those assets that serve to define our community, and what outcome will most be consistent with fostering that small-town atmosphere so cherished by our community?
Any questions, Trevor, Dave? Very none. Thank you, Adam. Hey, anyone else? Steve, come on forward, please.
My name is Steve Allen. I live at 835 Southwest Hillary Street. My wife and I have lived here all our lives, and our families, and we love this community. Mary and I believe in city zoning ordinances, and researched them before moving ahead with leasing our property to the Greenheart, Oregon Medical Marijuana Dispensary. We feel that the current regulations towards the placement of marijuana properties are adequate and conservative. They should not be amended as they're consistent with what the Oregon voters, the state of Oregon, McMinnville Planning Commission, and the City Council determined months ago before Linfield raised these concerns. How can one business decide to add such a substantial buffer around themselves, crippling the property owners surrounding them, when the city of McMinnville staff found that marijuana, medical marijuana dispensaries are similar in operation and impact to the other medical sales uses, i.e. pharmacies, drugstores, currently permitted in some of McMinnville's commercial zone areas? And that they could find no language within the current state law that would mandate a buffer to be placed around Linfield College or Chameketa Community College? The commercial businesses, owners in the south end of McMinnville, signed a petition I took around, and they said to stop the thousand-foot buffer because they feel that Linfield should not be allowed to put any limit on the future business opportunities they may have. Linfield should not be able to disregard the individual rights of the neighbors and the property owners. And I must add a little story. They were just mentioning about McMinnville and, you know, knowing it, it's a small community, and how it's grown, et cetera. My brother-in-law, Joel Myers, told me the story when this came up. He said, hey, you know, when we started our businesses, he said, we were known as hippies, the banks wouldn't loan us money, we were looked down on, what we were bringing to this area was just corrupt, it was just not right for this community. Oh, he worked for David Lat, Iry Vineyards, Papa Pino. You know, this is a business now that brings, what, billions of dollars to the area? So, let's look to the future on this, not to the past, the way, you know, that we've been told horror stories in the past. We're all adults. We all can abuse the internet, alcohol, food. You know, at some point, you have to decide on your own, and most of the people that I grew up with, that did have drug problems, eventually died from alcohol poisoning. And you that have grown up in this community, we could name the people and the stories. So, I'd just say, a buffer zone is not necessary, and there are businesses around the area. If you look at your list on the petition, it's major businesses that do not want this, do not want someone else telling them what they can do with their individual rights. And the government, you know, we put it together for that purpose, to look out for us so that we do have our individual rights. Any questions?
Because let's start, let's start over with you, Jack. Any questions? Okay, none over to that side? Let's move over here. None? Any at this end? No? Any at this end? No, thank you, Steve.
Thank you so much.
Okay, anyone else like to testify? Come on up.
My name is Harold Washington. I reside at 19191 Southwest Peavine Road, McMinnville, Oregon. Long name. You know, I'm very fortunate and very blessed to be able to sit before this council and planning, uh, planning. I've, I've had the opportunity and very blessed to own some property in the city of McMinnville. Mr. Montgomery and I, we've sat down many times when I decide to make, do a project or build a facility within McMinnville, which I would say almost is 100% of my properties. I ask him what the zoning is, and he goes forth and explains to me what the laws and rules and regulations are, and I adhere to those. I have a little bit of opposition to the point where you think there's a lot of properties out there. I've been very blessed to know some good people and good businesses that have solicited me and had many other businesses in town tell other businesses to get ahold of me in regards to leasing property. And yes, I did have someone that wanted to have a miracle marijuana distributor put in one of my properties. And I said, sure. After looking at all the regulations and realizing that it wasn't federally legally, that if I had an issue, I could really have a problem. My property, I was told, was the perfect property. So consequently, I went down this path, enlisted, listened to the tenant, possible tenant, and then also consulted council. After looking at all, and the connotations and who I am, I said, nah, I'm not going to do this. But I can sit here and tell you, I don't normally disclose how I vote, but yeah, I voted for the marijuana initiative when it was on the ballot. And the reason why is alcohol was pretty prevalent, and I've got two brothers, or a sister and a brother, that are alcoholics. It's pretty sad for me. But I also have a sister that's done drugs, too. I can sit before you today and say, the only alcohol or drug that I've taken has been legal. I've never done marijuana, but yet I voted for it. And one of the reasons is, it's here, and I've had friends that's passed away because of cancer. And it's a big C-word. Once you get told you've got that, you almost look at it as though it's not going to be a good rest of my life. So if there's a way and you see children... So if there's a way and you see children, young adults and children that you can hold in your arms, suffer from this, and have no other recourse to do something what was, at the time, was illegal, and watch their parents take them to Mexico or another country to get an illegal drug, which now is finally legal in this country. I just received last night in the mail the Popular Science magazine, and in it, it states here on page 48, and you could probably buy one at your local magazine or bookstore, it says something in here regards to, that there's 23 states and Washington DC that has legalized medical marijuana. I've done a lot of things for Linfield College. I don't think you can find another college in this country that you could draw a pattern or describe the best college, in my opinion, in this United States of America. They do everything exceptionally. Sure, image is a lot, and one of my, when I say image, I am concerned about an image because I've had a business my entire life. And businesses like Albertson, Buy Mart, Walgreens, they all have pharmacies. And some of the drugs, my wife and I have sat numerous times in an evening watching the news and watching the commercials and watching the side effects from these legal drugs that we are supposed to help us fight rheumatoid arthritis or diabetes, and you're thinking, you know, "I think I'd rather eat the candy bar." But with that, the difference between this pharmacy really is what it is, is it's naturopathic. And the signage about, if you've seen, and you probably have, the signage on their little bulletin about what this building is going to look like, an artist's rendition, it doesn't say marijuana anywhere. It doesn't even say pharmacy. So, we realize that Linfield wants to protect their reputation. Well, their reputation stands alone, in my opinion. So we know through the news register that businesses and restaurants have sold alcohol to underage students near and around the college. Greenheart also promises a two-ID checks to, before they will sell this medical marijuana. Linfield fosters a high education to young adults to gain new knowledge. Nowhere have I heard or read where any other college in 23 other states plus DC that has requested a thousand-foot buffer. Several universities across the country are urging studies for the use and data for the future use of marijuana on autism, cancer, epilepsy, fibromyalgia, Lou Gehrig's disease, which I personally know a college, a professor's wife, that has. Relief will only come when the environment is right for us and everyone. It bothers me a little bit that Linfield should be so close-minded to the progress and the new education that we are on the doorstep of. Has Linfield requested this barrier on their Portland campus? I have not heard that. As a local property owner already limited to the zoning and requirements and the limitations, why should I or a business that doesn't pay taxes be able to do a fast-track on, over any other business? I could probably go on a little bit further, but I think you've heard enough from just about everybody. And sometimes I've heard not only my father say, but also my mother, sometimes the rear end can only take as much. So, I'll leave this. I've always used it in training and teaching, and it was taught to me, and that's the reason I can teach it to other people. Sometimes you need to take things slow, just like a pro. Thank you.
Any questions for Harold? One around the tables? None, thank you very much, Harold.
Yep.
Or Santa.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Okay, anybody else like to testify tonight? Last chance, anybody else like to testify tonight? You can ask the council or the planning commission, but you cannot address any of, ask a question of any of the people.
No, I was just going to add.
Oh, you want to add? I thought, "Ask something." You have one, you cannot blame, you won't make, just state your name, you won't make a decision.
Okay.
Wayne Starks. I didn't hear anybody, I thought somebody else was going to bring this up, but I haven't heard anybody. There has never been one, not even one documented death by overdose of marijuana, not one. You can't Google it and find it, you can't look it up in any medical journal and find it, zero is the number. The other thing is, is that I was sitting back here thinking about all these youth that frequent Linfield College. There's a lot of youth in this community, and they frequent just about everywhere in this community. You ever seen youth? They kind of go everywhere, not just Linfield College, but everywhere in this community. So to buffer them exclusively, just because they have this number of youth flittering around, I urge you, you would have to buffer the entire city, everything. So, I would like to leave with a statement that's, you know, when you teach youth, you do so by example. I would ask Linfield to do so by example. And I'll leave it at that.
You mentioned that you haven't found any deaths relating to marijuana. Have you checked on being under influence of marijuana and driving?
Well, I wasn't speaking to people being killed while being stupid using, driving. I know of one right now on the driving issue, and that was in Portland just a couple weeks ago. So, beyond that, I don't know of any, but...
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, I was just speaking to the, to the point that as far as overdosing from a drug, alcohol drug, if your choice of drug is alcohol, there's been plenty of people overdose on alcohol and die. There has not ever been one overdose on marijuana.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take, maybe we'll go as long as we have to, but I see one more, so, is that you back there, Nan? Is that you? Come on up. I can state your, state your name, or state your name for the record and your address.
All right. Nan Bacon, 1175 Northeast 17th, Judge Evelyn's Old House. Anybody who lives here knows that. Anyway, I just have one thing to say. I have lived in McMinnville for 56 years. I remember having a conversation with a very old-timer who has since passed, and they told me that when they started Linfield, they could not drive cars. And Linfield was anti-cars because they were dangerous, you know? I think Linfield started in 1858, if I'm correct. Anyway, so they could not drive cars because they were dangerous. And so they had to prove to them that, yes, they are dangerous, but we can, you know, we can, we're adults, we're at this stage in our life. Anyway, so, it's came, it's just like history. 50% of the students now have cars, and Linfield was very scared to even allow them. So I just want you guys to consider history, and that's my point. Yeah.
Okay, anybody else do like to testify? Last chance, I'll ask the planning commission, and do you think you have enough deliberations?
Commissioners? Do we have enough to close the hearing?
Okay, what I'll do is I'll pass the gavel to you then, Wendy, and if you can, you can close the commission meeting and go into your deliberations. Oh, at this, at this time, too, I will actually close the public hearing, but the council meeting will stay open, but I'll close the public hearing for both the council and the planning commission.
Okay, and I'll close the public hearing for the planning commission, and we'll, I'll close the public hearing for the planning commission, and we'll start our deliberations. Commissioners, do you want to start? Commissioner Pete's and talk about your views?
Sure, so, I think there's a couple, is it on? I think there's a couple important things to consider in our decision tonight, and they primarily relate to the thousand-foot buffer around the Linfield area. One of those, as we consider adopting the ordinance, is looking at parallels and consistency when we do that. I think one of those key issues is while a property owner, Linfield, has requested a buffer because of the amount of youth there, I think we have to look across the city of McMinnville to see what other areas also serve youth that would be a parallel to that. I believe in the public testimony, Chamecauta Community College came up as an example of that. Having lived in this community and gone to McMinnville High School, I frequented that campus to get college credits when I was underage. So it does serve an underage population as well. So I think that parallel is important when we're making our decision and not just be driven by a single property owner. My second point is I think it's important to look at the primary function of the property. The primary function of Linfield College is to serve college-age students. While they may serve underage and youth as well, the primary function is college-age students. And so in that way, I think it's different than what we're considering community centers in the other buffer zones, the aquatic center, the community center itself, I think fall under a different definition because their primary function is to serve the community, their primary function is to serve youth and underage. So while I understand and respect Linfield's point of view, I think we do need to take that into consideration.
Great. Okay, Commissioner Chris Mason?
We wouldn't be sitting here today if voters in Oregon didn't vote for marijuana law. I personally vote for it for a reason that it decriminalizes the function and, I think the overcrowding in jails and, and court system was so huge that I think this will alleviate the problem. Marijuana is a controlled substance, I understand that. It does have certain pitfalls in it, but it also helps people with their medical situation. That's from the side of that. As far as business side, I think there is already too much legislation out there that puts, throws wood under the feet of business people when they, when they want to have a business. And I don't think that we should create any more, any more boundaries for, for businesses to have constrictions put on them. So, I think that, that Linfield students are big enough. You know, the upbringing of children and, and adult, young adults is up to the parents, it's not up to the institutions that they attend. So if somebody is going to make a bad decision of going to go and buy marijuana, or a good decision going to buy marijuana, it's up to that individual, it's not up to that institution that is teaching. So I think that the 1,000 buffer zone is really pointless.
What was the last thing you said, Commissioner?
Was pointless.
Okay, Commissioner Morgan?
You know, what's kind of interesting about the case is that we're here to implement a five-page ordinance. Instead, the whole evening, we discussed a single line in it. For various reasons, I could either support or not support the buffer zone around Linfield, but I agree with Amanda that if we are going to support a buffer zone around Linfield, then we should also be consistent in applying it to Chamecauta also. All I have to say would be very simple about it.
Commissioner Hillistad?
I supported buffers for some other uses, vacation homes, for example, on the planning commission. I lost. The planning commission voted to eliminate them, and since we said buffers were not needed for those, it seems inconsistent and unfair to have buffer zones for this. Now, we're stuck with the state-imposed buffers, but I recommend, for fairness, to have no buffers imposed except the ones the state required, especially if there are buffers around that other dangerous substances do not have. It also strikes me as a little strange that Linfield would be arguing that we, we cannot have this. I've seen an alcohol-related event taking place on the front lawn of Linfield. It can be said, adults attend that, but it seems to me, from all the testimony and the regulations we have here, that only adults are the ones that are going to be allowed in medical marijuana or even other types of recreational facilities. Now, I personally think it's a mistake to consume cannabis or alcohol or any other drug. I think all are a mistake, but I think it's also a mistake to ban it. Better to closely regulate it at closely monitored places rather than try to prevent it altogether. And for that, I would be opposed to allowing a thousand-foot buffer around Linfield.
Commissioner Hall?
What he said.
Ah, so eloquently said.
That was eloquently put, I think. I can understand why Linfield would be upset at the thought of this type of facility so close to its campus. I understand the image and all those problems, but I do agree with you, and I agree with a couple of other things in terms of what Amanda said about the primary function of a university, or a college, same thing in this case. I think we, we have a tendency to overdo our intention, well-meaning, but our intention to try to protect kids, when in fact, the college years are years when they're supposed to be out learning what it's like to deal with the world for the first time anyway. If you coddle them too much, I don't know. I agree with Martin, I guess, too. I'm not in favor of a buffer. Everything else in the ordinance, I think, is excellently done.
Okay, well, this is, has been really, it's great to hear everybody so active and involved in community discussion. We obviously all care about the community. It's hard for us as commissioners because really what Commissioner Morgan said is true. We are down to one line on this whole thing, to decide if, in order to apply a buffer, we need to decide that it's an area where children congregate significantly enough that it requires that protection. And so what I, in all, like the economics and the benefit to our community and all of that stuff, while we may agree with that, that's not part of what we're considering. So what I was listening for is trying to decide, is this consistent with how we are making decisions in our community about supplying, putting buffers around the community? And I am leaning towards what Commissioner Pete said in that if we were to extend that to all areas that had children come... to all areas that had children come and do things, we would be extending to parks, we, I mean, where does it end? So we might, you know, have to think about how do we consistently apply that requirement that we think about where children congregate? So while I, I, Linfield is an amazing, amazing asset to our community, I am in agreement that I think that it has not convinced me that that the primary purpose is for congregation of children, that we need to provide a buffer. So any other discussion on the topic? Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Well, if we...
Wait, we have to move?
If we move this on to the city council, I would propose to...
Break the buffer?
Eliminate six, six D, is it six D from the ordinance?
I think, well, is, is that clear?
Six D.
So you moved to approve amended by eliminating six D from the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay. Are we ready for a vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Yeah, just make sure that the planning, planning commission then did deliberate and they made a motion to actually amend the ordinance because the ordinance included buffer, to amend the ordinance not to include the thousand-foot buffer, correct?
Yes.
Comments?
Move to delete six D.
Right.
And would you state six D for those people that may not have a copy of that?
Six D is Linfield College campuses, take it on exhibit A to this chair.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so if that's, that's all the business in front of the planning commission, you can adjourn the planning commission.
Planning commission's now adjourned.
Okay, and for the rest of you, just to let you know that the council still is in agenda, we have not gone through our deliberations yet. We're going to take about a five, seven-minute break to let the planning commission leave if they'd like to, but I'll ask the counselors and I will ask the audience to refrain since the council still has to deliberate, deliberate aid, although we have received public testimony that the council not address this issue with anybody in the audience, or anybody in the audience not address this issue with, with the council, or the council is definitely made their recommendation. So that means I'd like to give thank to the planning commission for ten of those sessions, it seems like it's these kind of issues every time we do this. Thank you very much, planning commission. So let's take about five to seven-minute break.
Yeah, it was, it was a good year. Very thoughtful, people really were respectful.